Well, good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, February 16, 2021. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you joining us. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an unprecedented effect on all of us. We are all adapting to this new way of life and conducting business, and the school board is as well. Personal barriers are installed between members of the board, and our staff and visitors are socially distanced in the auditorium in compliance with the governor's orders. During this evening's meeting, some of our participants will join us remotely and some others will join us in person. We are taking these steps to ensure the health and well-being of our staff and the public. We value and appreciate your partnership. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge of the flag. Here to do the honors is Ms. Michelle Nordine, PTA President, Yates Elementary School. Ms. Nordine, please take it away.
Good evening Chairman Brown, Dr. Parker, and school board members. Thank you all for having me this evening. I would like to share this from the President Biden's inaugural address. Quote, "History, faith, and reason show the way, the way of unity. We can see each other not as adversaries but as neighbors. We can treat each other with dignity and respect. We can join forces, stop the shouting, and lower the temperature. For without unity, there is no peace, only bitterness and fury. No progress, only exhausting outrage. No nation, only a state of chaos." End quote. We can use these words to help us treat each other with respect and to support one another, whether we are parents deciding to send our children to school, parents deciding to keep our children in a virtual setting, teachers deciding to return to school to teach, or teachers deciding to teach virtually. We need to support one another and become involved in our children's education, not only to help our children but to make our schools better. In the words of Malcolm X, "Education is our passport to the future, for tomorrow belongs to the people who prepare for it today." End quote. At this time, I would like you now to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the liberty which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nordine. The next item on tonight's agenda is school board recognitions. And Dr. Parker, I believe we have some recognitions tonight.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think we have some special folks to recognize tonight. We'll start with our school board, School Board Appreciation Month. And Mrs. Price will take it away.
Tonight, I have the pleasure of acknowledging the dedicated members of the Newport News School Board. Governor Ralph Northam has proclaimed February 2021 as Virginia's School Board Appreciation Month in Virginia. This observance was established by the Virginia School Boards Association in 1989 to encourage public recognition of the roles and responsibilities of school board members and to highlight the importance of public education. The proclamation reads in part, "Whereas the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual strength of our commonwealth is built. And whereas locally elected and locally appointed school board members play an important role in our representative democracy, as decisions of local school boards directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools. And whereas the leadership of our school boards affect the development and future of our children and ensure that students are prepared to compete in local, state, national, and global economies. And whereas local school boards devote themselves to providing a high-quality education for all students in the Commonwealth. And whereas this year's theme, 115 years of providing leadership advocacy and support, reflects the partnership of the Virginia School Boards Association with local school board members as they serve their local divisions and advocate for public instruction with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. And whereas local school board members work with parents, businesses, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas School Board Appreciation Month recognizes school board members for their leadership and support of a public school system from which the entire Commonwealth benefits and is signed by the governor. As constitutional officers of the Commonwealth, Newport News School Board members are responsible for setting educational policies, employing school personnel, providing buildings and equipment, operating a transportation system, and dispersing school funds among many other duties. Their job is not an easy one, but our school board is committed to serving our community and ensuring that all students are given every opportunity to excel through education. The work of this school board has not gone unnoticed. As you may recall from earlier this year, the school board and the superintendent hold the honor of being named a Virginia School Boards Association Master Board, only the second school board in the state to earn this designation. The VSPA Master Board program is a development process that emphasizes teen building, communications, managing change, ethics, and working together to benefit every student. Tonight, each of our school board members has a certificate of honor from the Virginia School Boards Association at his or her seat in recognition of the commitment and service on behalf of the students, staff, and citizens of Newport News and the Commonwealth of Virginia. And they also have a special gift from the superintendent and our NMPS students and staff. Would you please join me in saluting the members of the Newport News School Board? Thank you for your service to our students, staff, and our community. This week is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in Virginia. Each February, the School Boards Association designates one week to recognize and acknowledge the work and the assistance that clerks provide to school board members, superintendents, and the school community at large. School Board clerks are responsible for keeping records of meetings and documenting official proceedings of the school board, preparing and posting meeting agendas, organizing meeting schedules, providing administrative support, and many other duties. This evening, we acknowledge our clerk of the school board, Tiffany Moore Buffalo. Ms. Moore Buffalo, would you please come forward?
Our board has a little gift for you.
(inaudible) School Board, we wanted to acknowledge you for your time of service. We wouldn't have even eaten tonight.[516.16][516.16](laughter) Truly, as a chair, I can say that she's essential to the governance of the school division. The clerk is the conduit between board and superintendent, and without clerk, our governance seems simply to not function. So, Ms. Moore Buffalo, the board has gotten you here, and we want to acknowledge your
You've heard a little bit about what Ms. Moore Buffalo does, and she maintains a complete and accurate record of all school board proceedings, including maintaining the board's online portal, Board Docs. She also maintains the board's calendar, coordinates and schedules their professional development, and serves as a liaison between the school board and the public. So, Ms. Moore Buffalo, on behalf of all of us, the citizens, the members of the school board, and all of our students, thank you for all that you do.[572.54][572.54](applause) That concludes this month's recognitions. But I've actually, if I may have you back down here to take a quick picture. If you would just give us a minute or two. This slasher's going to direct you from here.
There you go. There you go.
All right. Before we move on to the next item on our agenda, I would like to invite our community to view this week's This Just In video segment. It runs throughout the week on NMPSTV and is available on demand on our website. During our regular meetings, we provide the time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and as well towards the end of the meeting. So, there is more than one occasion for you to address the school board during this meeting. The school board recognizes that during the pandemic, some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via a web form, email, or voicemail up to 30 minutes prior to the meeting to be included in the official meeting record. And I believe at this time, we do have some cards. And so, I'll call you in order as I call you up. Please remember that you have a three-minute time limit. The green light will come on. Yellow light indicates that your time is coming to an end, and a red light means that your time has expired. Okay. So, we'll start with our first card. Mr. John Krikorian.
All right, ready? Yes. I'm not great with those lights, so I'll do my best. My name is John Krikorian. I'm the head men's basketball coach at Christopher Newport University. I'm an educator. I come from a family of educators who, for years, fought to be considered essential. I believe they are. I have three children in Newport News schools, one in high school, one in middle school, one in elementary school, and I've spoken with dozens of families who share my views. I wanted to be here tonight to support Dr. Parker and the board on your recent decision to return our students in person. Personally, I thought they should have returned in November, but I understand these are complex decisions, and it is my hope that once we demonstrate it's safe, we can return our students full-time. I've been on the basketball court with my team for months. We wear masks, we distance. There's been no evidence of spread in that environment. I could have opted out, but I didn't because it's my job. And this year, more than any in my 22 years of coaching, I have found that my players need me, and they need the outlet of basketball. I have witnessed, just in my team, more stress and anxiety than in 22 years of coaching. Let's be honest, COVID stinks. It's impacted every one of us in this room, but just because we can measure something doesn't make it the most important thing. We have red zones and trend lines and positivity rates. Those are not the only threat to our students. Mental health, isolation, depression, anxiety, social and emotional contact, kinesthetic learning, the feedback you can only get through body language, eye contact, sports, clubs. COVID is no longer temporary. It's been almost a full year. If you're a first grader, it's been 20% of your life. And what if new strains emerge? What then? What if it doesn't end in a month or two? Will we never go back? I'm told there's a segment of teachers, staff, and parents who are strongly opposed to this plan and to returning. My answer is simple: you don't have to. For our families and students who do not feel safe to return, we have a plan, we have options, we have people whose job it is to provide the resources for an equitable education at home. There's countless other school districts in Virginia, the nation and the world, that have done this successfully. A North Carolina study showed it was actually safer for students and staff to be in school than in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
No, he's not on.
Finally, to our teachers and our staff, you are essential, and I promise that the joy that you will see in the masked faces of your students will be worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Our next speaker is Connor Collins.
Chairman Brown, Dr. Parker, members of the board, thank you. My name is Connor Collins, and I am a high school teacher, social studies at Warwick High School. This will be my seventh full year in Newport News Public Schools, and I wanted to talk about not the fact that I don't want to return, but that I feel the timing of the R2L Phase II is a little bit rushed. If we go back to a statement made by Dr. Parker and the board the beginning of the year, it was scientifically based and based on following metrics. We were told that if we were in a red zone for any of the primary metrics, percent positivity and 100,000 cases, then we would remain in our current phase. We're still in that position now, and we will still be in that position on March 8th. And so, my argument will be that we should push the date to at least include the entire fourth marking period in person for safety of our students, our staff, and our families. We're looking too short-term. Yes, it will help us mentally to return to the classroom, but if we have a spike in cases because we were too rushed, which we have seen across the country, then we'll have a long-term impact of losing more lives in Newport News. On top of that, the CDC guidelines do state that if there is red zone activity in an area, then higher education, secondary, I should say, should remain virtual. And elementary should be limited to targeted groups and limited attendance. The plan currently calls for 100% of elementary to return half-day, four days a week. That's putting our elementary school teachers, staff, and students at too much of a risk along with their families. So, my message today is just to continue what we have been doing. It's been working. It's what's led to Newport News and Virginia to bring the curve down, and hopefully, we can keep our eye on the goal, the long term, and return safely for a fourth marking period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right, next speaker is Mr. Taylor Bigley.
Lights are... Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you. May I take this off? Okay, all right. I think I'm far enough away. All right. Esteemed school board members and otherwise interested parties, I apologize, I'm not a public speaker, but I'm going to do my best. My name is Taylor Bigley, and I have maintained my small business and later my residence here in Newport News for the last 25 years. Our daughter was graduated last spring from our local Newport News high school system, and our son is a freshman in our zoned Newport News high school. There are many things to love about our schools, and some aspects we hope will change. I've been a member of the Newport News Education Foundation for many years as well. As such, I've been a cheerleader for the Newport News Public School System, but I, like many, have found not much to cheer about recently. In March 2020, my wife and I had to make some tough decisions about our family business. The tough decision was whether we need to close for two weeks or remain open. Two factors required us to remain open. First, we have open contracts with the Virginia Housing Development Authority that required timely performance and no opportunity for failure. Second, our family needed to maintain income, and our business would not survive a long-term shutdown on the heels of a long, slow winter season. So, we trained our staff, provided PPE, and we carefully navigated the troubled waters without incident, mind you. We have 20 employees. We're good, and we're going to stay good. We work shoulder to shoulder together. We have to. That's our business. For my daughter, her graduation at Todd Stade even was a respectable attempt at normalcy. Thank you, guys, for that. Guys and ladies, I apologize. Obviously, not what any of us would have chosen, but well-conceived and well-managed. Thank you again. My son has been locked out of his school since the beginning. He's a freshman. Heck of a time to be a freshman in high school. As his mother and I run a mom-and-pop small business, we can't be at home to manage his school. We have to be there. We don't have local family to help us. We have to do what we have to do to maintain our life, to maintain our business so that we don't shut down and close out 20 of our employees. We have to work, and he has to stay at home. He's too frequently alone, frequently scared, comes to the door with a bat. Okay? This is bad. And his grade, his performance, his education has dropped off precipitously. He's always been a solid student, but now, with this virtual learning, he's flat, he's depressed, and he's lonely. Children are not well-served alone.
Thank you, Mr. Bigley.
Are you... Sir, I have three more minutes here from my wife. I appreciate the opportunity to finish my statement. This is very important. I haven't gotten to the best of it.
Okay.
If anyone... I have a tremendous respect... Well, excuse me. Children are not well-served alone. Depression and suicide are raging in our virtual society, and it's not something we can rightfully push on our kids into managing. They are not equipped for that. I have tremendous respect for the safety, concern for our teachers, our administrators, and our students, of course, but mostly our children. They are the reason we're here. They are the reason teachers and administrators have their jobs, and they are the reason we cannot remain in this pandemic panic. We must move forward. We must move on. Education is not just about teaching facts and history. It's not about math and science exclusively. It's about teaching our kids to overcome obstacles and learn fortitude and perseverance, how to overcome and tackle your fears where it would be much more easily retreated from and in fear. While my son is at home alone, all of his cousins are in their respective schools, from a very large school district in Atlanta, high school, very big school, Pennsylvania County, where his other cousins are, in school. They've been there five days a week since August, and my son sits at home alone. Surely, those school boards and teachers didn't want to make that tough decision to open, but they knew they had to. It was the right thing to do because the student is why we are all here. I hope we'll be able to again... I will be able to again be a cheerleader for our Newport News Public School System. I do not covet the hard decision that you must make, but if you have children in our school system, there's really no decision to make. We are required to provide the best education we can, and no one can effectively argue that our kids are sitting at home, better off sitting at home in front of a computer screen, and that's not the best we can do. Please open our schools. We need this. Thank you.[1486.15][1486.15](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Bigley. Mrs. Joanna Bigley, I'm going to hold your card. If we get to 7:15, to our speaker time, then we'll bring you up, okay? All right, then we're now going to move on to Clement Danish? Danish?
Yes. I'm Danish. Good evening, sir, and the board. I am not one of the parents that you may see here in the gallery right now, but I am a grandparent of a, let's say, 13-year-old and an eight-year-old, and both of them approach the studies quite differently. But one of my key things I want to add here to the group is, I know management is a very important part of everything we do in the educational system, especially education itself. So, my basic question here is, we know where we stopped, we know what's happened during the COVID. What are you going to do to make up the time? That's basically where I'm coming from. And if I was still in the Army, I'd be asking you the five Ws: who, what, when, where, why, and how. How is the only H in there. And how is important because we can identify all the Ws. So, sir, that concludes what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.[1572.51][1572.51](applause) All right. All right, I know that the last time you came and spoke, I did not do a good job with your name, and I don't think...
You got this.
I don't think I'm going to do any better this time around. Okay, I'm going to try again. Mr. Prinkema?
Good. Close, close. You forgot the R at the end. I'll forgive you. It's okay. It happens. So, I'm actually speaking a lot on what Mr. Collins already said. Me and him both work together. We both are right next to each other, and he's helped me kind of work my way into this. But I agree with a lot of what he says. The only concerns I really have, again, are kind of, first of all, the morale. Obviously, yes, there are some great points that the other people here have made about it. I mean, I feel like that a lot of our teachers are already at the point where we had to reinvent the wheel, and I do agree with him. I think that a lot of, right now, we're still in parts that are red zones, and I feel like if we open without properly taking into account the time it will take to let those die down, I feel like we could be walking into a real big issue. I think that another issue that I feel like we have is just like procedures, unauthorized building protocol, stuff like that, where I feel like if we don't have a proper handle on this, you know, we could end up with another... I mean, I know Warwick had an issue where we had a positive case a couple of weeks after we started going back two-a-days, and we go back again this Thursday, Friday. I think a lot of people are assuming, I mean, I don't know, I don't think any of the parents here are thinking that, but I think a lot of people are kind of trying to push for this just because of pressure, peer pressure from other districts, stuff like that, and I don't want that to be the case here. You know, I have a relative who got COVID. They were... It was pretty awful. I saw it from webcam, and they looked like death door. And they're not that much older than I am, so I really would not be, and not just myself, but I know other people who are far more vulnerable, who would be in a situation where if they caught it, it may not end as well as it did with us. And I mean, I'd rather not have that risk when if we could wait a week or two and then wait for the red zones to at least come out of it, then at least we have a more safer area to come back in. I think that if we open too speedy a time or too quick to try to not necessarily go to public pressure, but try to jump into something without properly looking at all the metrics, I feel like we could maybe make a mistake that could force us to re-close for a much longer time, like it happened back in December when we originally planned to come back. That's about it.
All right, thank you. As you come up, our next speaker is Ms. Mary Voss. And if we do run out of time, you can stay over into the second part of the meeting, and as well, you can also give us a letter. If we run out of time, you can give us a letter that we will take.
Hello, my name is Mary Voss. I'm an NMPS parent, teacher, and graduate. I'm speaking today in support of following the updated CDC guidance for safe school reopenings that was released this past Friday, February 12. CDC recommendations are the gold standard for safe school reopenings, so I emailed the board the link to this important new guidance for school safety during COVID. Significantly, the CDC now calls for virtual learning for middle and high school students while CDC indicators for COVID transmission are in the red. Newport News and 99% of the United States are currently in the red zone. Now, I understand the CDC may allow some exceptions listed to their rules, but if you're having to contort into a pretzel to justify not following guidance that pretty clearly recommends all virtual for middle and high in red zones, which Newport News is, then are you making the safest and most research-based... is, then are you making the safest and most research-based decisions for NNP students, teachers, and staff and their family members, many of whom are immunocompromised? And keeping in mind that many of our NNP families are African-American or Hispanic-American, two groups are at five times greater risk of severe COVID than white families, who statistically are the main group in support of reopening, likely because COVID is far less deadly among Caucasians. But we have a majority-minority school district, and I ask that you think of all of our families when making such consequential decisions that will impact our public health. God forbid, NNP students, teachers, or staff get severely ill or die of COVID that they contract at school or bring it home to their families. You will want to be able to confidently state that you followed the CDC guidelines, not that you claim some questionable exemptions in order to undermine the intent of the CDC guidelines. Also, in the updated guidance, the CDC is now specifically calling for a reduced attendance hybrid model for elementary schools. The current NNP return-to-learn plan for elementary is for all in-person elementary learners to attend four half-days per week, which undermines the traditional two-day-per-week hybrid model's main benefit, which is to cut in half the total number of students in school buildings at one time during COVID. Let's see. Trying to hurry. I know I'm getting close. So, reducing the number of elementary schoolers in the building at a time is especially important because the CDC is calling now specifically for following six feet of social distancing in schools. And I can tell you, as a former pre-K and kindergarten teacher, that six feet is going to be a challenge for the youngest learners, and it'll be much easier if we could split in half that group. So, we got half of them come in Monday, Tuesday, deep clean, and then half of them Thursday, Friday. It's going to reduce the amount of COVID transmissions in the building. So, in summary, for the health of our students, teachers, staff, and all of their families as well, please adjust the NNP return-to-learn plan so that it follows the updated CDC guidance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Voss. All right. Our next speaker is Mr. Gray.
I had to rush here from food distribution downtown. If you haven't done that, our kids and our families downtown are hurting in this environment. I encourage you to help out at your local food bank downtown and give some service downtown. It really does change lives. But I came here tonight with the premise of speaking on the issue of reopening schools. Ms. Voss kind of hit a lot of the issues I wanted to talk about, but specifically, I want to draw your attention to those updated CDC recommendations. As you all have heard, Newport News is in that red zone, and that red zone is not something we should take lightly. I have friends who work in the federal government who are telling me right now that we are at a very scary place in this country. We could be seeing major increases of new variants of coronavirus that spread three to five times faster than the current coronavirus that's dominant in the United States. This is not something we want to see spreading in our city in Newport News. Can I also draw attention to the fact that our home state of Virginia, right here, has had some of the worst vaccination rollout in the entire country? That means that our community is still largely unvaccinated. Mind you, also, your teacher staff hasn't received all of its vaccinations. So, you're about to send your soldiers into war without the full preparation they need. Think about that. I certainly would not want this school board, this city, this amazing school division to ever fall into that trap that other school divisions have, where they have lost the lives of teachers, students, and family members. Our community is a community that cares about people. We love people. We show people that. Newport News cares. We need people to understand that, and the school board can take a stand and say, you know what? We're not going to just go into this unprepared. We're going to go into this with the best preparation we have. I think that's one of the most important things that I wanted to come here tonight. It's why I drove here so fast, is because I do believe it's urgent. And while I'm great to have my vaccination, and I'll get my second one on the 26th of this month, not every teacher has that privilege. Not every person has that privilege. And many of our families work for the shipyards and other industries here. Could you imagine the community spread if our kids come back to school and then this thing spreads throughout Newport News? It's not to scare people. It's called reality, and it's time that we in this city face reality, face reality and stand up. This isn't a war between teachers and parents. We're in this together. We love our kids, and we love everybody here. Teachers and parents together, we stand united.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Do we have any additional cards at this time? Are there any more cards? Okay. There being no additional cards, Mrs. Bigley, it is not 7:15. If you would like to say a few words, please come on.
I'll be very brief. My husband already spoke, and I will tell you that whenever it is that we get to the point that everybody can get to school, it's going to take a lot of effort from the leaders, if it hasn't already, to talk people off the ledge. My husband and I spent a lot of time with our employees those first few weeks. We were exhausted at 8 o'clock at night because everybody's tempers were high and their nerves were high. The students are going to be that way, the teachers, the administrators. So, I just would like to say that I certainly support the return to learn. I have family members that are parapros in Georgia that are bus... They have bus duty every day. They've been doing it since August for five days. I know there are scary things out there with this disease, but we have to get somewhere, and this is a great start, and I thank you all for having the courage to do it. But what I will tell you as a community is, we're going to have to give each other some grace when we do start because there's going to be a lot of very scary things for everybody at every level, the students, the teachers, the custodians, the food service folks, everybody. And it takes a lot of grace, and we're going to be tired, but we can do it. We can do this. I've seen it in other communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any additional cards? Any additional cards? There being no additional cards, then we will move on to our next item on the agenda. Just as a reminder to the public, per our norms and protocols that the board adopted in August of this year, the board is not going to respond to any of the comments that were made at this meeting tonight, and... But there will be follow-up by the superintendent's office with you for any questions or issues that needed to be followed up upon after this meeting. So, now we'll just move on to item number three, which is our consent agenda, which includes 3.01 minutes from the work session on January 19, 2021, 3.02 minutes from the regular meeting on January 19, 2021, 3.03 minutes from the special meeting on January 19, 2021, 3.04 financial reports, the Child Nutrition Services report for January 2021, and 3.05, the personnel report, and 3.06 has been deferred till March. So, can I have a motion to approve items 3.01 through 3.05?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to... Approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, Gary Hunter, second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mrs. Aiman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
(coughing)
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. Thank you. Then the next item on our agenda is section four, action items, and we do have an action item this evening, a policy revision, item 4.01, which is naming and renaming of a school, facility, and portions of schools or facilities. Dr. Parker, do you have a presentation?
Mr. Chairman, the board was presented the information for the policy revision at the last board meeting. Mr. Wright and Mrs. Brooks are standing by if there are any questions regarding that policy revision.
All right. Can we have a motion first before we take discussion on item 4.01?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the action item 4.01, naming facility policy revision.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Motion's a second. Any discussion, questions on the policy? All right. There being none, then, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mrs. Aiman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
(pause)
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. Then that will move us to item five on our agenda, which is reports and information. And I believe there's a lot of interest in this tonight. We're going to have an update on our return-to-learn plan. So, Dr. Parker, I'm sure that lots of folks are going to be waiting for this portion of the meeting.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several of my staff joining us this evening for this presentation, and I will kick it off and turn it over to the appropriate staff member during the instruction portion. But I'd like to start by saying that the return-to-learn plan that is before you and has been considered by the board was the basis of the January 14 release of information by Governor Northam with the release by the VDOE of their new phased guidance, interim guidance to K-12 school reopening. That information was also supported by the Center for Disease Control and the Virginia Department of Health. And the information that formed that revision, revised guidance, I'm going to go over some of that this evening just to ensure that the community has a good understanding of why that information is a little different than where we start at school and the guidance that we use to start our school year. But before I start with the, that phased guidance, let's look, see where we are with our COVID, community COVID transmissions. I mentioned in December, I was a glass-half-full kind of guy, and I felt that when Governor Northam had implemented some restrictions before the holiday, that hopefully we would start to see the results of some of that. Now, we definitely did not see that before, immediately after the holidays. We actually continued to see a spike as a result of the holidays where individuals, where we saw positivity rates and transmission increase. Recently, we've continued, we've started to begin to see a decline in Newport News and in the surrounding peninsula area in terms of COVID positivity rates and transmissions. So, there's some hope down the line that we'll continue to see that data move in a positive direction, and I encourage, continue to encourage our community to do their part as best possible, wear a mask, socially distance, and continue to support our community efforts to lower the rate of transmission in our community. But we are starting to see a positive trend in the right direction at this point. So, moving to the, when you go to the Virginia Department of Education's website, this is one of the documents that is directly linked in our return-to-learn plan, on the states, the Virginia Department of Education's and Virginia Department of Health interim guidance to K-12 school reopening. And this information was released on January 14, as I mentioned again, and provides a clear understanding and the guidance that supports our return-to-learn planning. So, I'll start with just a portion of that information and why it's a little different from the start of the, beginning of the school year. As you recall, at the beginning of the school year, our community, our staff, and the board had the weighty option of starting the school year in several different formats. We had an option to start in a hybrid model, a blend of hybrid model with some of our elementary and special needs students, starting in hybrid, and everyone else virtual, and then we had the third option, which was fully virtual. Now, while Newport News decided to start fully virtual, and it was supported by our community at that time, based on where we were with our metrics, COVID, obviously, this pandemic is new, and hopefully, when nothing will repeat a similar situation, we decided to start in a virtual start. However, across the Commonwealth, there were many divisions, and across the country, there were many divisions, and include public and private, that started school in a hybrid model, offering in-person instruction for their students. Now, that also was contrary to the CDC guidance at that time. So, they, we take the guidance that's provided, and it's a local decision to make the best decision at that local level possible for the students, and you're supposed to take in various factors when you make that decision. So, the CDC has guidance, the American Pediatric Association has guidance, the Virginia Department of Health has guidance, and the Virginia Department of Education has guidance, and the governor just gave us further guidance recently. So, how do you try to, how do you reconcile that information to make sure you make the best decision for your locality as where we are tonight? And our return-to-learn plan, we needed to focus on something that we felt we could manage and will allow us to make sure that our students were safe. So, up to that point, between August and January, our primary focus has been on external factors that impact our community spread in our community, whether it's the Greater Peninsula. And we see this on our health dashboard, where we have the Greater Peninsula, we have the Eastern Region, and we also have Newport News, health community metrics. We focus on everything external of the school. But on January 14, we got a clear message from the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education that we need to also look at the potential and the factors that are, that the data that's available now, the evidence that supports that schools can be safe once you implement instruction in a school and you implement the five key mitigation, safety mitigation strategies. There's clear evidence now with those schools that started as early as August up to this point that you can minimize the amount of community spread in a school if you're implementing five key safety mitigation strategies. So, on January 14, you'll see that, in that diagram, you see the purple portion that became a part of the guidance that the Virginia Department of Education provided. And that guidance says that not only do we need to assess where we are in implementing those five key mitigation strategies, which are listed at the bottom of that page, wearing a mask, social distancing, consistent handwashing, cleanliness habits and disinfection of spaces, and then if someone, if you do have a positive case, effective contact tracing measures. If you can assess and implement those strategies consistently, the schools that have done that have seen very small incidences of community spread in their school. Okay? And that data's there. That's the local science that's been taking place. The CDC also, in that release on Friday, which is being considered right now by the Virginia Department of Health, also referenced a national study that supports that as well. So, with that being said, now there's another area that we need to focus on, our metrics external to the schoolhouse, but also our metrics inside the schoolhouse once we return students to in-person instruction. The other method, the other thing that they asked us to focus on is the level of school impact, and I'll share what that means in a moment, and how we will respond if we see instances of community spread in our schools once students and staff return for in-person instruction. And that's the portion that's the new part of this plan that's supported in our timeline for returning students. We still focus on those external metrics, but they cannot be the sole determinant on whether to return students to in-person instruction anymore because you can have community spread in your community and your schools are relatively safe. That has been proven. That is not a debatable topic at this point. The other thing is the potential for risk of transmission, just making sure that you are managing any risk of transmission in your schools. So, next slide shows the, what we have developed in accordance with that plan and how we would respond if we see instances of community spread in our schools once students return to in-person instruction. The guidance sets precedent of low, medium, and high, and how Newport News would respond to that, those metrics, depends on what we're seeing in our buildings once students are in their classrooms and we're managing safe practices. So, if we see low instances, zero to sporadic cases with no evidence of transmission in schools, we know that we can continue to offer both a virtual and a hybrid model of instruction, and student athletics could move on without, with consistency as long as we continue to monitor our metrics, continue to emphasize our safety practices, to make sure that we are minimizing the risk and the evidence of community spread in our schools. If we continue, if we see any instances of community spread, we have to continue to manage it as, it can be an isolated incident. I use the example, I hate to say this, but adults have been proven to be more of a problem in schools that are offering in-person instruction than the students. So, in many cases, if someone was eating lunch with a colleague and they, and one person contracted COVID and another person caught it from them, that is considered community spread. That is considered by the state guidelines as an outbreak, but it's an isolated incident that would not mean that that entire school is not safe. So, you have to assess if you start to see more, any outbreaks in the school, what are the, what are the factors that led to those individuals contracting the virus? Is this a issue of community spread that would warrant closing, sending a classroom home to quarantine, closing down the school for a period of time to focus on cleanliness and mitigation strategies? And it just continues on when you get to the high range if you're seeing several instances in various locations or a more frequent incident of community spread in your schools. We have to respond to what we're seeing in our buildings, but we can't respond to those, and we can't respond to the what-if until the kids get there. So, we have to make sure that we have the safety measures in place, and we have made every amount of preparation under the sun to prepare our students to... to prepare our students to return for in-person instruction. In addition to the five mitigation strategies, we have many more. And we're working with our building leaders to continue to put practices in place consistently in the schools to make sure that students are safe as a part of their daily routine. So, that is the piece that was missing in August and in November and at the beginning after the holidays that is now in place now. We focus on metrics also that are in our buildings once our students return safely. That is scientifically based on schools, the data from schools that have offered in-person instruction since August that have proven to show that there's low incidence of community spread when safety mitigations are implemented in fidelity. Next slide. So, our return to learn plan, I'd like to mention first, the CDC released some information on Friday. That information, I was on a call with the state superintendent this morning. Hate putting his name out in public, but I was on a call this morning with the state superintendent talking about those CDC metrics. And they're being assessed and reviewed by the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education to reconcile the directions that were given in January fourteenth, okay? And the current plan by the BDH and the new guidance recommendations from the CDC. So, there may be more information coming out of those talks at some point. But at this particular evening and this, tonight, we're talking about the current return to learn plan that has been, that we're moving forward with. The timeline for return to in-person instruction is listed above, is listed on this slide here. Our staff returned to work in schools to start preparing for the return of students on February sixteenth today. And we are looking forward to the return of our first group of students on February twenty-second. That, we do, we have worked in an asynchronous day on February nineteenth for teachers to have a day of planning and preparation for those students to arrive on February twenty-second, that Monday. And those groups would be students, our special needs students, K through fifth grade, special needs self-contained, grades six through twelve, English language learners, our newcomers through grade eight, and our pre-K through grade three students. Now, this is supported by the Virginia Department of Health and the CDC to focus on your most at-risk or highest need populations as your first tier of instruction. So, we are still aligning with that guidance from the CDC and that, and our phased plan for returning students. Because we have spring break that's coming up the first week of April, we really have to push the timeline to get the remaining students in by March eighth. That gives four full weeks of instruction, quality instruction. Remember, we're not just doing this to get kids in class. We're doing this to make sure we can impact the teaching and learning that's taking place for many of our students who are not doing well in a, in a virtual setting. Getting them back by March eighth gives us four solid weeks before spring break. And we know that we're, we still will have SOL testing, we still have other assessments that follow post-spring break. So, we get them into a routine, we get a chance to get some assessment, some data on our schools in place before spring break to assess where we are with implementing our safety measures. Where are we with making sure that our students and our staff are safe? We get a chance to have a full solid block of time before spring break and if necessary, making any necessary adjustments at that time. Next slide. So, there were some questions asked about vaccinations and a few other things. And I would just say this evening that we've put out some information to our staff and regarding the Moderna vaccine that our staff were provided. We were very fortunate in vaccine distribution. While it's been, it started, it may speed up or lag. Newport News has been treated very well at CNU with the vaccine distribution. We polled, surveyed our staff, up to seventy-five percent of our staff indicated they would, they would like to take the vaccination. And we're currently sitting around eighty-five to eighty-eight percent of those staff members who indicated they would take the vaccine have received their first dosage of the vaccine and will be scheduled for their second shot. It's also important to notice, to note, going back to the science around the Moderna vaccine, that the first shot gives you eighty percent coverage and the second shot of the Moderna vaccine brings you up to the ninety-five percent and gives you the extended boost. However, just getting the second shot does not give you the ninety-five percent or the, or the extended boost. Takes you fourteen days after the second shot before you see the effect of the second shot. So, when we ask about the feasibility of waiting for every staff member to get a second Moderna shot, they have eighty percent coverage right now. And the studies that we have from the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health and that are being, being spoke to by the governor, these folks were not vaccinated. They, their low incidence of community spread and they were not vaccinated. So, that data shows that if you implement those five mitigation strategies, the safety precautions that are in schools, the vaccine is an added level of coverage that we feel very confident all of our staff will get who choose to take the vaccine. However, we're not basing that on the science of a second shot, vaccination shot, because it is, it does not give us the feasibility from, from the evidence that we've reviewed. It does not increase the level of coverage that we have until everyone is vaccinated fourteen days after the shot. Right? So, with that being said, we are focused on making sure that we implement the five mitigation strategies, that we put the metrics in place to assess the risk in our schools and that we get the kids back in class so we can really see if we're doing a great job. We don't know yet, until we get our students there and until they're walking the halls and sitting in the seats, whether we will do a great job. But if we're waiting to, to the day that we are doing a great job because there's no other risk factor, we will not get back to school this year. So, we are, so we're making every effort at this point to make sure we implement the plan in fidelity. So, in this particular case, we've done a fairly good job with getting vaccinations. We're looking at rescheduling the second round of vaccinations, and that will require some assistance from substitutes. We know that with the Moderna vaccine, with the second dosage, some individuals, not all, may have a reaction to the second shot. And we're preparing for that by trying to look at the pace out, the scheduling of those shots so it does not negatively impact the instructional calendar. But we know that we will need some substitute coverage to possibly facilitate that. Right now, we currently have thirty-seven long-term subs filling in, in teacher vacancies. We also have eight hundred and twenty-three active substitute teachers. Of those eight hundred and twenty-three, five hundred and ninety-three have indicated a willingness to work face-to-face. And we have one to four subs that will be available daily at each school to assist for emergency situations once students, once our students and staff come back. We've also extended opportunities for some of those substitutes to take the Moderna vaccine and get vaccinated as well. So, we feel like we're putting the layers of coverage in place to make sure that we can support our teachers who are getting their second vaccination shot and, and the consistency of instruction as we, as we move forward. Our bus drivers were also in the first tier of individuals who received the Moderna vaccine to make sure that we can still manage and ease of transportation, manage the transportation schedule that's necessary once we get up and running. Next slide. So, at this point, I'll turn over to our chief academic officer, Dr. Mang Lamott, to talk a little bit about teaching and learning. She, we received, we had a community forum with families a week ago. We also had a forum with staff. So, there have been questions that we've received. We have tried to put some of those responses in our weekly newsletter to our staff. But also, we want to make sure, Dr. Mang Lamott has prepared a little bit of information in this presentation based on some of the questions that we received in some of those forums with our, with our families. So, Dr. Mang Lamott, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening. Chairman Brown, Vice Chair, goes on, members of the board. It's good to be here this evening. Since we announced the timeline to our teachers and parents, we have had a couple of Ted halls, as Dr. Parker had referred to, where we went over the plan and we took in questions. Due to time constraints, we didn't get to all the questions. We have compiled them, and my goal tonight is to add a bit of clarity to the plan through the lens of those answers to the questions that we received. I'd like to first start with the schedule. So, on the next slide, primary is focusing on the elementary schedule. As I have said many times before, an elementary schedule always brings a bit of a challenge even before the pandemic. So, I want to focus a bit on what we have planned. And see, before you is a model of an elementary half-day schedule. This model is just that, it's a model. It's not a detailed schedule. The model does not fit every situation at every single one of our schools in Newport News. So, it's really important to recognize this picture for what it is. A representation of an instructional model we will use to guide the development of our more detailed schedule. So, when we flip to the next slide, we start to break down our model into a more detailed schedule. What I'm about to explain is still a very vague overview, mind you. But all schools and every administrator and every teacher has a much more detailed schedule available to them. Remember, in Newport News, we have three tiers of schools operating at different hours based on our bus transportation time. Tier A has our secondary schools, but Tier B and C have our elementary schools. And because of this, our elementary instructional schedules vary, but just slightly. So, before you, today, you see a model for Tier B. Tier B begins at eight-twenty in the morning and it ends at two-fifty-five at night, sorry, in the afternoon. You can see that we have a Group A, which is our hybrid kids, because we chose to do a concurrent model. That concurrent model means that I don't have just a teacher who's going to teach just virtual kids. And I don't have a teacher who's just going to teach hybrid students. We have teachers that are going to be teaching both hybrid and virtual. And in some special cases, which I'll talk about later, we have some teachers that are strictly virtual, teaching just virtual kids. So, in our Tier B, what we have is we have all students reporting at eight-twenty, our virtual and our hybrid kids. And all students are going to have a concurrent morning meeting. After that morning meeting, our Group A kids, which are our kids that are in person with that teacher, are going to work on mathematics and English language arts with their teacher in person. While they're working with their teacher in person, Group B is going to work either independently or synchronously with a resource teacher and asynchronously working on independent science and social studies work. They will then go home, Group A will get on the bus, they go home. And that's when our teachers have lunch. And the afternoon, what happens is our teachers now have that time, that freedom to work with Group B, which are the students that are working virtually at home, on mathematics and English language. And they do that synchronously, meaning that they're Zooming, like we're doing right now, talking and teaching their kids, while Group A is going to do what Group B did in the morning. They're going to work independently on resource science and social studies. So, when we flip flop and we look at Tier C, it's just a little bit different, just a smidge. Because Tier C begins so late, for the hybrid students, it begins at nine-twenty-five AM and it ends at three-fifty. Well, we want to give our teachers some flexibility. So, our Group B kids, which are kids that are staying at home, are going to start at eight AM and they end at two-thirty-five. And the way that it scaffolds is at eight AM, I'm a teacher, I meet with all my virtual students and I work synchronously with them, and I'm working synchronously with them on reading. We're doing reading groups, I'm pulling them. And then at nine-thirty, all students are reporting. My hybrid kids, my in-person kids are getting off the bus, they're coming into the classroom. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to pull my virtual kids and my in-person kids together and we're going to have our concurrent morning meeting. And going back to the morning meeting, remember, that's when we have our social emotional wellness curriculum taking place. So, then, from ten oh five to twelve-thirty, what's going to happen is our Group A are going to work on mathematics and reading with their teacher in person, while our Group B, our virtual kids, are going to work independently. And they're going to work on their resource, their science, and their social studies. The rest of the day, then, Group A's going to go home. They're going to work independently on resource science and social studies while that teacher then pulls Group B to work synchronously on mathematics. Remember, it's just mathematics because she did reading in the morning. So, if we switch to the next slide, a lot of people are asking questions about what we're doing with science, social studies, and resource. So, we can flip to the next slide, there you go. And what we have going on is we are going to have, science and social studies will be asynchronous. But there are times that a teacher may pull students in small groups for science and social studies depending on the day. And there will be specialized synchronous learning taking place for identified students for science and social studies. Now, our resource teachers, it's kind of going to be a mix. There's going to be some days that's going to work synchronously through Zoom with their students. Synchronously means I'm teaching you through Zoom. And then asynchronously, they may say, you know what, we, I just taught you the rainbow of the color, you know, the rainbow colors. Now, I want you to go paint something independently or color something independently that demonstrates all those colors. So, that's our science, social studies, and resource instruction. Now, if we flip to the next slide, you can see our secondary instructional schedules look very similar to what we see all year long. There's a typical A day, there's a B day, they have first block, they have second block. What changes is the type of learning. It's the model of instruction that we are employing for our students. And because of COVID and because of social distancing, we have developed a concurrent hybrid model. It's meaning that our teachers, like our elementary teachers, are going to be teaching both their in-person kids and their virtual kids at the same time. And what we like about our concurrent model, and if we flip to the next slide, I've showed you this before, that they have that, a teacher will have the flexibility, day-to-day, week-to-week, just overall, to either teach their students virtual and in-person at the exact same time, or they can flip flop their instruction. And they can teach their in-person kids, and then once they're done teaching them, they're going to put them, set on some sort of internet work, and then they're going to work virtually with their students at home. And that's our flip-flop model. So, as you can see, just moving to the next slide, that we have, another thing that's really important to recognize is that we have Wednesdays. So, in the midst of all this, so we have Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday instruction. And for elementary, our elementary, our teachers score days a week, regardless of whether they're virtual or whether they're at home. And then our secondary kids, it just depends on your group, right? So, if I'm Group A, I go Monday and Tuesday, and my last name is Adrian K., or I see my teachers in person Thursday and Friday because my last name begins with L, three D. So, on Wednesdays, though, a lot of people are asking questions about what happens on Wednesday. So, we have actual instruction that takes place from eight to nine-thirty in the elementary schools with our students. Our elementary math instruction takes place during that time. And we have identified reading groups during that time where the teacher is working with students. Secondary students are working asynchronously while teachers are pulling students if they need that additional support. So, Wednesdays are a workday. They're a workday for our kids. They should be working independently or they should be meeting with their teachers as identified in small groups to receive the support that they may need. The afternoons are the only thing that are reserved, and that's for teacher professional development, for planning, for collaboration, for grading, and for feedback. On the next slide, another really common question that we are receiving is, okay, so I'm a virtual teacher. I don't have hybrid and I don't have virtual kids. I am staying at home for medical reasons or other reasons, and all of my students are virtually. So, what's important to recognize about this is that students who opt for virtual learning may either, they could have a hybrid teacher or they can have a teacher who is fully virtual, all right? Fully virtual students who have a teacher, they teach in person as well as being taught concurrently as described in the prior slide, right? But you can have some fully virtual teachers that may have fully virtual classes or a mix of classes. And what happens is elementary fully virtual core teachers will have a fully virtual student class. And they follow the same operating hours as our in-person people. But there, it just looks a little differently. It looks a little bit more like what we're doing right now with our students. Our secondary virtual teachers can very well have in-person kids and virtual students, right? It just depends on what our students have opted in for. So, if I'm a biology teacher and I'm working from home, I may have fifty-two percent of my students that are virtual, but the other forty-eight percent are going to be in person. And we are working with building principles to allow those students who are in person to find a space where they can go. And they can zoom in with their virtual teacher during second block. But you know what? During fourth block, they're going to walk down to their other class where their teacher is teaching in person. So, it just depends on the option that a student has selected and what our teachers can do medically if they can be there in person or they have to teach in person. But all fully virtual students and teachers are going to follow normal school operating hours, and that's really important to understand. So, we go to the next slide. So we go to the next slide. We can see, um, another common, common question is what about libraries? Can I check out books? You know, are my students going to be able to get the books that they need for research, just to read for pleasure, to read to improve their reading scores? Students are allowed to check out books. All of our school librarians are following key mitigation strategies, which include they wash their hands before and after using books. They are cleaning all surfaces with CDC approved cleaner and letting it dry thoroughly. And they're allowing their books to rest in the air. So if I bring a book in and it's a certain type of print material, I can leave it unstacked for two days, and after that second day, I can put it back on the shelf and it can recirculate the students. Other print materials may not do two days, but they can go up to seven days. And if they're stacked, then it's a seven-day period. So the data on which types of print materials are that the viruses stay on surfaces was used to determine how long we're going to let those books rest. We go to the next slide. One very important thing that I want to reiterate with all teachers, with all parents that are listening, with board members, with all stakeholders, is starting on February twenty-second, all pre-K through five students will begin normal school operating hours. We understand that it is only pre-K and B that is going to return in person on February twenty-second. But for consistency, for students specialized services, for students with special needs, it is important that all of our elementary students start on normal school operating hours that have been talked about previously in Tier B or Tier C, right, depending on the school. Grades four through five will continue to learn virtually, but they are going to begin school and they are going to end school at the same time as they run their year. Um, starting March eighth, twenty twenty-one, all sixth through twelfth graders are going to begin normal school operating hours. Just make that mental note, so we all know when, what time to begin school. And our teachers and our building administrators will be over communicating this message, so we ensure that all students are starting at the right time on the right day. Next slide. We did put in to our calendar, teacher workdays. We know that there's a lot that goes into preparing your classroom for in-person instruction, just like we do at the beginning of school days, right? We know there's letters to be sent home, there's other schedules you have to prepare for. You've got to put names, places, you know, on desks. There's lots of things that go into it. So we have designated February nineteenth as a teacher workday for all pre-K through three, English language newcomers and special ed. So everyone, starting on February twenty-second, all those teachers and instructional assistants will have a teacher workday on February nineteenth. Teachers will assign students independent work for the day. So this is not a day off, parents. This is a day that you will log into Canvas and you will look to see what your teacher has assigned for you to work on. For grades four through five, March fifth is our teacher workday. Now on the calendar, it is a half day for parent conferences. But to give our teachers a full day to prepare for students returning, teachers will assign students independent work for a half day because it's just a half day on the calendar, so it should not be a full day of work. Our elementary schools will hold conferences kind of earlier in the week, so there will be no parent conferences on that Friday. And our secondary teams are going to hold conferences with parents the third week of March. So if we go to the next slide. So that wraps up what I, all the questions that I had. And these were the answer to those questions, and we are now going to move along and to athletics. I'm going to introduce Mr. Mike Nichols, who will give us an overview of the athletics program, and at the end, we can take more questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, School Board, and Dr. Parker, good evening. Again, my name is Mike Nichols. I'm the Program Administrator for Youth Development. And I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on our fall sports and also to inform you of the mitigation strategies that we will have in place for all of our fall sports programs. As you see before you, we have the fall sports, where we have two separate starting dates for our season two fall sports. Our first start date, February fifteenth, which was yesterday, was for our schools to have competition cheer, football, and sideline cheer. Our second start date, which will be February the twenty-second, which will be next Monday, and that will be for cross-country, field hockey, golf, and volleyball. The difference between the two start dates are that those, um, those teams, those three teams, competition cheer, football, and sideline, that started on February fifteenth, they have a fifteen, they have fifteen minimum days that they have to practice before they can have their first competition, so they have to start earlier. Those schools, those teams, cross-country, field hockey, golf, and volleyball only have a minimum of eight days before they came again, thus the two different start dates. And you can also see that this year, we will only have varsity sports programs. We will not have JV sports programs for the fall this year. Now just to talk a little bit about the mitigation strategies and the processes that we have in place for our schools and also for our teams. First off, before any student athlete is allowed to practice or compete, they must take the health screening questionnaire. And they must, we ask that they take it before they even report to the school, so that if they have tested, if they have answered yes to any of those questions, they stay at home. Um, however, once they report, either a coach, an athletic director, or an athletic trainer will also ask these students these questions, um, just to make sure that everyone is safe. And if they have answered yes to any of those questions, they would not be allowed to practice or compete, and they must return home. And now, once those students have gone through the health screening and they have answered no to those questions and they are allowed to practice, they will be checked in, but in order to practice, they must all have a mask. And to ensure that each student athlete and coach has a mask, our athletic department has provided each school with an ample supply. And additionally, for the athletes and coaches, to make sure that they can periodically wash their hands and clean their equipment, we have also provided them with hand sanitizer, we've provided them with face shields, masks, paper towels, and disinfectants that would allow them to clean their equipment, clean the balls off, and make sure that they can keep their area clean as well. Also, before even a team is allowed to practice, they must have a practice plan. And their practice plan must be submitted to their school administrators, school administrators and their athletic director. And it must be approved before they are allowed to start. A part of their practice plan will include how they're going to do their athletic check-in procedures. It will include their pod makeup, or exactly how many students will be in each particular pod before they start practicing. And also the individuals who are in that pod, which will help us also help us with us if we had to contact trace. It will also talk about their mitigation procedures and also the guidelines that they have for their student athletes. The mitigation strategies may include social distancing, how far each athlete has to be apart. They will talk about no shared water bottles. The athletes can't share towels or clothing or shoes or anything at that point. The practice plan will also talk about how coaches are required to wear face coverings at all times. And saying the athletes must wear them before they condition and after they condition. However, if we have an athlete that wants to wear their face mask while they are conditioning, that is allowed as well. Um, early in the year, I had a coaches meeting with all of our coaches, all of our athletic directors, and all of our athletic trainers to discuss mitigation strategies, so that everyone would hear the same message at the same time, so they know exactly what each school would do to make sure that our kids were as safe as possible and also know what we would provide for them to make sure that they were safe as well. And since that time, I meet with each school's athletic director at least weekly to go over their plans and their mitigation strategies. And they in turn meet with their coaches to discuss what each school is going to do specifically to make, to help mitigate COVID nineteen and also how they would implement their plan. And then, once our teams are selected within the next week or so, pretty much after three days of practice, teams are selected. And once the teams are selected, then the team coach and the athletic director will have further meetings with their parents or family members through Zoom to discuss the mitigation strategies that each team will have and also the team rules, so that everyone knows exactly what they have to do when their student athlete comes and also if parents happen to come to a school and maybe to pick up their student athlete. And last, we have also provided on our website and also on the school division's website, we have the student questionnaire that student athletes have to complete, hopefully with their family members before they come. But just in case they don't know where to go, we have it on our website. And also, we have an assumption of risk and waiver on our website as well, just to talk about some of the risks that are associated with having COVID nineteen. Also, I didn't mention them here, but also some of the mitigation strategies that we have that we send out, so that each individual sport has additional mitigation strategies that they have in order to compete. For instance, as we talk about volleyball, in the past, after every match, volleyball, they switch sides so that if you're sitting on the left side of the scorer's table, you moved over to the right side and vice versa. But this year, we will no longer do that, so chairs will stay in place. So every student athlete will have their own assigned seat where they can have their mask on, on their seat if they're entering the game. So these are just some of the mitigation strategies that we're having in place. And I just wanted to give you an update about the sports that we were having session starting on yesterday. So at this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Dr. Parker, is there another portion to the presentation?
I believe there is a final slide. Mrs. Rousseau, I just wanted to touch base on transportation, which was also an area of question that generated some questions. So thank you, Mr. Nichols. We'll turn it over to Mrs. Rousseau real quick for our transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening again, members of the board. I do want to just update you on the state of readiness, I guess, for transportation. We do have, no surprise, I think every school division has some staffing challenges in transportation. Currently have seventy-one bus driver vacancies. We are holding weekly hiring events. You heard a little bit about that from the pots earlier this evening. Um, we do have also fifteen bus assistance vacancies. We do think we have an adequate number of substitute drivers currently, though, because we have a need for fewer routes with the number of students that are returning. So we're going to continue to hire and train our drivers as quickly as we can, but I think we're ready to return kids to school. We did process seven hundred and seventy-five childcare transportation requests last week. It's unusual for us to do that as school begins. I would like just to let everyone know that our flexibility will be much more limited than it typically is on a regular school year. So you're just going to have to bear with us as we process requests just as quickly as we can, but not nearly as quickly as we have in the past. And last but not least, the bus stop information is now available online, so parents and students can see when their bus stop, what their bus stop information is, and know when they'll need to be at the bus stop. That's all for transportation, Dr. Parker.
Thank you, ma'am. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the updated return to learn update for this one month. If you have any questions, my staff is standing ready.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Board members, I'll just remind you that we have six more items in Section Five to go through and two more presentations. Uh, so with that being said, are there any questions?
I have a question for Dr. Maglemont regarding cameras. Um, since many teachers will be teaching virtual and hybrid, and some of the concerns I've heard expressed is regarding students not turning on cameras. What particular support or what, what do you see being done a little differently as far as cameras are concerned when students return to school?
You know, that's a really good question. I, you know, I don't think we're going to do anything different with the return to in-person versus virtual. We really don't want to force our students to put on their cameras. We encourage it. But we, we really don't want to force them to do that because it, you know, there are a lot of different things going on in the households that we don't want to, um, you know, make students exposed to everybody else in their classroom. So, um, we're going to continue with the same rules of encouraging them. We encourage engagement. So the more engagement you have, the more students you want to, the more students want to turn on their cameras. So we're really pushing what are those instructional strategies that engage your students in the class and motivate them to want to turn on the class on their camera instead of just lecturing to them like we're talking right now. Um, and as far as the setup in the classroom for concurrent teaching, um, we are providing the teachers with dual monitors and strategies to help them with how do you set up your laptop so your students can see the whole class, if that is the model you're choosing, right? Because if I'm doing flip flop, that doesn't matter. But if I want everyone to see the whole classroom, then I need to move my laptop in a certain way. And I need to then be able to have everyone see me and possibly my other classmates in class. Um, and we're giving, you know, instructional strategies. The perfect example is you have somebody who is in person and you nominate them to be the person that monitors the chat for the teacher. So while the teacher is teaching concurrently, they're monitoring the chat and they can sit there and, you know, they teach, you know, Mrs. so-and-so, you know, Johnny has a question, this is his question, and then she can address it. So we're doing all of that through professional development that we have delivered all through January, and we will continue to deliver professional development to our teachers along the way. So I hope that answers your question. If you need any clarification, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Ely.
Um, I know during the pandemic, we have had kids that fall behind. Have new news, have we changed the grading schedule or the, on the way we grade our kids as far as their passing or failing? Is it, are we still grading them on the same way we would grade them if they was in school?
Um, I'll go and take that and Dr. Maglemont, you can chime in. We have not changed our grading policy or grading scales due to the pandemic. What we have done was, well, we know that there was an adjustment in instruction. And how we remediate students or support students in instruction has changed. Um, there, as you're aware, with exams, we gave some, had to give some flexibility due to a technology issue, more so than, than a deferment of midterm exams. But the expectation for academic work is still, still the same, how much work teachers provide, how much assistance they provide. The practice of teaching and learning has adjusted more so than the expectation that a student, an A is still a ninety-four plus or whatever the grading scale may be, but we have not made any changes in that way regarding our grading expectations for, for students. And Dr. Maglemont, you can, you can chime in from there, so with, in terms of expectations for academic work.
Dr. Parker, you did a great job. I think you explained exactly what we're talking to our teachers about and how we're asking them to, um, you know, to be thoughtful of the circumstances that our students are in. And when we say that something is due on a Wednesday, we have to think about the circumstances that all students are in and how we are a little bit more flexible in how we personalize our instruction and the way we have expectations for turning work in as well.
Thank you, Dr. Maglemont, because the reason why I brought that question out because I know some of our kids are, are having challenges at home and, um, throughout the city, different, some of the kids are, have different internet service. I know some on hotspot, some on high speed, so I know, especially in my household, we have high speed. But if I go to my grandma's house, I don't know what she has. It takes, it just takes forever for everything. So I can imagine kids that may have what my grandmother have, whatever internet that is, and how slow it moves versus when I'm at home. It's high speed, so I know that may be disparity. And, you know, that's a good reason why we do need to get kids, you know, back in school as soon as possible when it's safe because just the difference in the quality of internet is being, you know, they may be a little bit delayed or it may go out their Zoom session or whatever, you know, mechanisms they're using to be logged or committed with their teacher. It may be, so that might be a reason why some of the kids, um, maybe failed it. They may just give up and say, my. They may just give up and say, my internet is so slow, I'm behind, it's going in and out, I'm tired of this. So I just want to make sure we are, our teachers are being understanding to those kids who may not have the best necessities or internet in their home facility.
That's a, that's a very good point. The step further also is to try to assess the students who are failing classes or not doing well academically. We have processes in place to identify those individual students and to address their individual needs. So students fail for many different reasons, whether they're attending class, whether they're not turning in work, whether their work is too hard, whether they, so you have to, one, once you know that a student is not doing well academically, now we have a hybrid option, in-person instruction on the table. But we also have means of reaching out to those students and families to see if there's other ways we can assist the student or family. And technology is just one of those concerns. Some student, as we are well aware, some students aren't learning well virtually, may need to be in that in-person instruction just to do better and the for the level and the level of accountability of having to report every day may may add that consistency and structure that they need. So we are reaching out to our schools, our principals are have communicated with teachers. We are assessing how many students did not do well academically the first semester. And the key is now not to wait for the summer school to fix a problem. The key is to provide the remediation and support now and not consistently say that with us with staff to make sure that what can we do now to make sure that their second semester gets a better outcome? And that's what we're working on right now.
Thank you so much.
Additional questions? Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
I actually have one question for clarification and then another. So fourth and fifth grade, they begin on March 8th, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then I think our students are going to be very excited to be back to school. It's going to look different. It's going to be a challenge for them in terms of wanting to be close to their friends, but I do think they're going to appreciate being back in the building. My concern from hearing this particular model and what we have to do to make this happen is for the teachers, them having to teach virtual as well as teaching, you know, in person. So, Dr. Maglemont, if you could review with us just very quickly what some of the supports will be for teachers as they're trying to navigate this new normal that they're going to be presented with?
Absolutely. And, you know, they have been challenged since last March. You know, I've been a virtual teacher since 2002 and we've thrown teachers and students into virtual learning and they've adapted overall. We all adapt, right? And so when we think of the concurrent model, it actually brings them a little bit closer to what they're used to and further away from what they're most uncomfortable with, which is fully virtual, right? So, again, there's a lot of autonomy that has been given to our teachers. So at the elementary level, they only have, I think it's 20 minutes, and Mrs. Wall, she's probably over there saying, no, Tina, it's 30 minutes either way. There's a block of time that we call the morning meeting. And the morning meeting is the only time that it's concurrent. And so if you can picture right now, you're at a board meeting and I'm talking to you virtually and you still have people in front of you and you're still talking and communicating with them, but I'm also working with you virtually. That is the concurrent model, right? And you can hear me and I can hear you and we're all in the same flow of work. And that's only in the morning meeting. And the morning meeting is really about social emotional wellness and really helping our kids feel welcome, helping them understand where we are in the world and how to express their emotions and everything that they're dealing with. Everything else from there on, elementary-wise, is in-person or it's going to be synchronous, just like they've been doing since March. It is our sixth through 12th grade teachers who have then tried to balance, how do I want to work with both virtual and hybrid students? Now, mind you, we gave our teachers the choice, right? We were going to try to split up fully virtual and hybrid, but our teachers are like, I love my kids. I don't want to lose my children that I've had since September. And so the model that we picked was really to help our children feel more comfortable because when we really go back to it, Maslow's like hierarchical needs, right? It's you can't teach kids until they feel safe and until they feel comfortable, right? So our kids have built relationships with their teachers and they care for their teachers. And so therefore, this concurrent model helps to still build upon those relationships. And so when you talk about the concurrent model, a teacher then has choice. I'm doing exactly what we're all doing right now. You're in person, I'm I'm virtual, we're still learning from each other, we're still having dialogue and we're still having discussion. But then they have a choice to say, you know what, I don't want to work like that. I'm going to let Tina go and work on a worksheet to go do some research while I'm talking to everybody in person. And we're having dialogue and we're having discussion and we're going into some really cool things about, you know, history, right? And then I'm done with you and I'm going to say, okay, we're not done with you. That sounded awful, but I'm now done with that instruction and I'm going to allow you in person to work independently on something. And now I'm going to move over to my desk and I'm going to go back and I'm going to see Tina, I'm going to put my headphones on, I'm going to have my mic and I'm going to zoom with you and I'm going to do exactly what I just did with my in-person kids, but I'm going to do it synchronously online. So the supports that we're giving teacher is a lot of professional development. Thankfully, and I'm so blessed we've had these Wednesdays. Every Wednesday, unlike any other year in our whole history, our teachers get professional development. And we have begun giving professional development since the beginning of the year on what is blended learning? How do I blend my instruction? How do I integrate technology and online learning with in-face instruction? And then our PD teams and our instructional, our curriculum and development teams are just phenomenal and they've showed our teachers through video and through modeling of what does it look like to be able to teach concurrently? And we are going to continue doing that. We are going to be there to build those supports that they need to help them feel comfortable. Now, are there going to be hiccups? Are there going to be things that go wrong? Yes. But we have learned from other divisions like York County that are currently, they're using the concurrent model and Chesapeake. We've learned from them and we're taking their best practices and we're teaching them to our teachers. So while not ideal, nothing in our situation is ideal. I think we are doing the best we can within the parameters that we have been given to ensure that all students in Newport News, whether they want to be virtual or in-person, get the instruction that they need.
Thank you, Dr. Maglemont.
Additional questions? All right, well, I'll just ask one in closing, which is the same question I think I asked last month. So I'm a parent at home and I'm excited about the opportunity for my child to return to in-person instruction. As an elementary school parent, middle school or high school parent, how will I know that it's time to return to learn? Am I going to receive an email? Check the division websites? Are going to be a phone call, text? How will I know when it's time to return?
So I'm going to give that to school leadership because they've been working directly with principals and a lot of the communication is handled at the building level. So, Dr. Byrd, thank you for stepping up and just how are our schools communicating with parents right now about the return to learn planning?
Oh, yes, thank you, Dr. Parker. So we are making personal phone calls. We are scheduling a, each teacher should schedule a meeting, a class meeting with their students to explain exactly what that individual student's schedule will look like. So, Dr. Maglemont went through an explanation of all the different varieties, but what a parent wants to know is what does my child's schedule look like? And so that teacher will meet with that child, hopefully in a virtual setting, but if not, we will pick up the phone, we'll make sure every parent knows exactly what to do on February, what's the first date?
22nd.
February 22nd and then again on March 5th.
Hey, Dr. Brownett, then a secondary.
Absolutely. For our secondary schools, we'll be following the same procedures. We'll make sure that our teachers have an opportunity to have a Zoom meeting or personal phone call to their students who are returning in person. We'll also be working on some transition programs for our students who are new to middle school, our sixth graders, as well as our students who are new to high school, our ninth graders. Some special time out to get them acclimated to the buildings because they've never been to those buildings before. So we'll have some time for that as well and opportunities for parents. We're also printing out schedules for our students as secondary schedules are a bit more complicated. So we're printing out schedules with room numbers and everything so that students will have all that information before March 8th.
Wonderful. So in a situation of great flux and uncertainty, the teachers will actually be in control of this process and they'll be leading the process of returning the students to learn. So they'll be able to mitigate a lot of their own concerns because they'll be reaching out to parents directly. Wonderful, thank you. And I think, Miss Amy, you have a question?
I just had a quick follow-up. For the secondary students, just so parents can have their eyes open on their emails, are they probably looking for maybe the first period teacher to reach out or the homeroom teacher to reach out?
Yes, the homeroom teacher most definitely for our middle school students and it most likely might be their first period teacher. I'm not quite sure for high school as they're working that out, but they'll certainly have a personal contact prior to March 8th and have their schedule. Students can also access their schedules on StudentView to give them the actual room numbers as well. And our schools are very, very good about posting information on their social media pages, their school websites, making phone blasts as well as emails to parents.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Hunter?
I do have one question. I've noticed that most, many of our parents are excited to have our kids coming back in school. And so I'm just, a couple of my emails I did get that the parents had opted opt to go virtual for the whole year and now have changed their minds. And what does that percentage looks like and how do we rectify and getting those kids in school if possible?
I'm not sure exactly what the percentages will look like. I can't answer that question, but we are, we are sympathetic to what parents are requesting and so we are capturing their desires. If they request on a form and then we're just letting them know, we'll need some time to evaluate what things will look like during that first week.
So we are, so we do have a waiting list as right now?
I guess you can call it a waiting list, yes.
Okay. That's a good thing. Bad thing, but good thing.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Parker.
Thank you.
And thank you. And I believe that we can move on to item 5.02, which is our proposed 2021, 2022 school calendar.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a proposed calendar presentation by Mrs. Brooks. As you're aware, this time every year, we bring a proposed calendar for the upcoming school year, which has moved to the board's consideration at the March meeting, this year being no different. Mrs. Brooks is prepared this evening to provide a presentation for the board on the proposed 2021, 2022 school calendar. And I think she's joining us virtually. Yes, Ms. Brooks?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the school board and Dr. Parker. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share highlights from the vision-wise calendars being proposed for next year, which has presented challenges and opportunities not experienced in past years. So for the first time, I will be sharing two calendar options with you this evening. But before I review the calendars, I'd like to speak very briefly about the team that developed the draft calendars, the process we used and the factors that we considered in planning the calendars that are before you this evening. Now, the draft calendars are an outgrowth of the work of the calendar committee that consisted of teachers, administrators, parents and representatives from our instructional areas and our support services, all of whom provided valuable input during the calendar development process. Now, our calendar planning process began with the work of the six school divisions on the peninsula that formed the regional calendar committee. For over 10 years, the regional calendar committee has worked to determine uniform days for our winter and spring breaks, our academic semesters and staff days for professional development. We found that having similar calendars has benefited our regional programs such as those at New Horizons and the families of our employees who may work in one city but reside in another. So after the regional committee met in October through January, our Newport News committee used the region's recommendations as a framework for developing the draft calendars that I will be sharing with you very shortly. We will post the draft calendars on our school division's webpage for feedback and will share the calendars with the PTA, the Employee Communications Forum and our community advisory groups for input. We will continue to solicit feedback through March when the calendars will come before the school board for approval. Now, there are several factors that we considered in planning the calendars. First and foremost is our instructional program. So we develop calendars that will support our work in preparing students to be college, career and citizen-ready when they graduate. So with that as our guide, we determine our marking periods, our teacher workdays, our family conference times, our staff development days, our winter and spring breaks and our holiday observances. Then we base the calendars on the state requirement of a minimum of 180 instructional days for students. Now, state law also allows school divisions to base their calendars on 990 instructional hours per year, but as a region, we initially base our calendars on days, which actually provides more than the 990 instructional hours. So once we have our student days in place, we add teacher workdays and opportunities for professional development for up to 200 days as required by the state code. And lastly, we work within a 245-day contract or appointment period for our 12-month employees. So what's new for next year? As I mentioned earlier, the upcoming school year calendar has presented challenges and opportunities that we've not experienced in past years. First, as you are aware, the General Assembly modified the law that requires the first day of school to start after Labor Day. From our research, we found that several school divisions in Hampton Roads are considering starting prior to Labor Day and we have included that option as one for you to consider. Secondly, next year, the traditional first day of school will fall on a religious holiday that would restrict a portion of our population from having the opportunity to participate in many important student activities that take place on the first day. As a school division that prides itself on being an inclusive organization that understands and respects the diversity in our community, ensuring that no students are denied the ability to attend on the first day of school is important to us. We want all students and staff to feel welcomed and valued as part of the NMPF family and we want all students to be able to start on the same day. And lastly, the General Assembly is considering legislation that would allow up to 10 inclement weather days to be counted as unscheduled virtual learning days, which will lessen our concern about the need for adding makeup days to the calendar. So we will continue to track that bill. So with this new flexibility and the desire that all students have a common first day of school experience, I am bringing two proposals before you this evening. The first proposal would begin school the week before the Labor Day holiday on Monday, August 30th. And then the second proposal, schools would start after Labor Day on Wednesday, September 8th. So I'd like to take a moment to speak to each of these. The first proposal, which will begin school the week prior to Labor Day, would allow schools to more quickly address the learning loss that has occurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic and school closures during the past year and would follow a very robust summer instructional program through Spark. It would allow us to provide students with targeted instruction that first week of school by focusing on remediation and intervention strategy. It would also provide more opportunities for professional development for our staff throughout the year with the flexibility to provide additional supports for teachers and students. The following is a visual representation of the pre-Labor Day calendar. I would like to add that under state law, school divisions that open prior to Labor Day must also close schools on the Friday before the holiday weekend. So this proposal reflects that schedule as well. reflects that schedule as well. Now, the second option before you this evening is to begin school on Wednesday, September 8th instead of the Tuesday after Labor Day. This option would allow all students to begin school on the same day and have a common first day experience. This option also reflects the school division's values of diversity and inclusion, as I shared earlier. Under this option, the school year is shifted later by one day with no additional days for staff professional development. So following is a visual representation of that option as well. Now, both calendars that I've shared with you this evening include our marking period dates, and the report cards will be issued in the box in the lower-left-hand corner. And to the right of it, we always denote our early dismissals, our staff development days, and our holiday observances. And so now I would like to share highlights from the 2021 through 22 proposed calendars. Now, both draft calendars schedule family conference time during each semester and also provide a teacher workday each quarter with time for professional development. Both calendars designate November 24th, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, as a teacher and student holiday with offices closing for a half-day. And I hope everyone enjoyed the two-week winter break this year because across the region, we will be observing a two-week winter break again next school year, beginning on Monday, December 20th, and continuing through Friday, December 31st, with schools and offices reopening on Monday, January 3rd of 2022. Now, the month of January includes the Dr. King holiday and a division-wide professional development day at the end of the first semester in both drafts, which is consistent with our neighboring school divisions. And while we're in January, I wanted to mention that both calendars include enough instructional hours to cover up to three days that we could use to make up time lost due to inclement weather or dangerous road conditions. And as I stated earlier, we may be able to count inclement weather days as unscheduled virtual learning days if the legislation is passed by the General Assembly this fashion. Now, in February of 2022, schools and offices will be closed again and observance of President's Day, and throughout the peninsula, spring break will be the first Monday through Friday in April, so next school year, the break will be April 4th through the 8th. And in closing out the school year, we are including tentative graduation ceremony days for our seniors, which will be Saturday and Sunday, June 11th and 12th. So in terms of our next steps, we will survey our families and staff about the pre-Labor Day proposal and continue to solicit input from the community on both calendars through a family town hall, and we'll post a link to the calendar on our webpage later this week with the opportunity for viewers to ask questions or post suggestions. And based on that input, we will revise the calendar drafts if needed. Then the draft calendars will come before the school board for action at your March 23rd meeting, when we will also share the survey results and other community input. And once approved, we will publicize the calendar through school newsletters and in our electronic communications, such as newslines and board reads, and on our school websites and the school division's webpage. So at this time, it will be my pleasure to respond to your questions or to note your suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Board members, any questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Brooks. We look forward to taking this up for action at our March meeting. To the general public, please do comment on the proposed calendar because we will have those two choices to choose from, and please let make your voices heard and let us know how you feel about the calendar. All right. Then we will now move on to item 5.03, which is the Chapter F of the School Board Policy Manual. And I believe, Ms. Brooks, you're doing that one as well?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brown. Good evening again, Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Searls, Law, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. It is a pleasure once again to share highlights from seven new and revised policies and procedures with you this evening, which will also include the second policy chapter for review this year. The policies that I will be sharing with you represent the work of a policy committee, which includes two school board members, Dr. Bass and Mrs. Amon, along with three principals, administrators from the Department of Teaching and Learning, and the Office of School Leadership, a teacher, our two attorneys, and myself as the policy administrator. This evening, I would like to share a new policy and procedure that support best practices in the school division regarding behavioral intervention, and following that, I will highlight changes that we've made to several of the policies in the chapter on facilities, planning, and development, which is the second of three chapters the policy committee will review this school year. So as required by the state code, we developed a new policy on the use of student seclusion and restraint, which is our first policy for review this evening. We've also developed procedures to implement the policy that are aligned to the new state regulations. In addition, the law encourages school divisions to use positive behavioral interventions and support strategies to reduce and prevent the need for the use of seclusion and restraint, and this approach is also included in our Newport News policy. So I'll start with the issue of restraint. Our school division's policy allows physical restraint to be used as a last resort for behavioral intervention when it should be, and it should be appropriate to the level of risk posed to the safety of oneself or others. And although it is permitted in the state regulations, our school division policy does not allow the use of pharmacological restraint in addressing student behavior. Our new procedures to the policy are aligned to the state regulations and require staff and parent notification on incidence of restraint, annual reporting requirements, and initial or advanced training for employees depending on the employee's job responsibilities and level of interaction with students. And the employee training began in December, and it's well underway throughout the school division. Now, in terms of student seclusion, our school division's policy prohibits the use of seclusion as it is defined in the state code. However, under state law, seclusion does not include timeout, in-school suspension, detention, a student request a break in a different location, removal of a student for disruptive behavior from a classroom, and placing a student in a room during an investigation or for questioning a student regarding a violation of the student code of conduct. So we may continue to use these approaches under our Newport News policy. And now to our policy chapter review. You may recall at your July 1 organizational meeting that I shared our plan for implementing the systematic review of our 11 policy chapters over a five-year period while continuing to develop or update the policies that might be required by law each year. And included in those 11 chapters are over 400 policies in addition to implementing procedures and exhibits. So this evening, we will review the second policy chapter in our timeline, which is on facilities, planning, and development. And I would like to thank Mrs. Mary Lou Russell and the Plan Services Team, led by Mr. Wade Beverley, for sharing their expertise in guiding the policy committee to complete this work. Now, the committee reviewed the 16 policies in the facilities, planning, and development chapter, and nine of the policies were revised, combined, or deleted. Most of the revisions were to update and streamline the policy language, provide examples for greater clarity, reduce redundancy, or make changes to staff position titles. And so at this time, I would like to review just a few of the policies that were changed. In this first policy, which is on facilities, development objectives, the policy language was updated and streamlined to support the school board's commitment to provide quality facilities and future school sites to sustain educational programs for students fairly and ethically on a cost-effective basis. In our evaluation of facilities, planning, and development policy, we added examples of the periodic reports and reviews that the school board may require from project managers to evaluate the effectiveness of facilities, planning, and development process, and they include capacity utilization studies, condition assessments, and enrollment projections. Now, the facility's funding policy addresses the factors that affect cost projections for new buildings, building additions, and building renovations, such as enrollment sheets and cost estimates. So in updating this policy, we added capital maintenance needs as a cost factor, which includes roof replacements, HVAC replacements, and other system replacements that are expected to extend the life of a building. Now, the facilities, construction, and renovation policy addresses the approval requirements for construction plans and specifications. We replaced our school division's policy with the relevant state code to ensure that we included all of the state's requirements. A new provision in that policy requires an entity with professional expertise in building security and crime prevention to review our school division's facility design and construction plan. Next, we combine our supervision of construction policy with our construction records and reports policy, since they both address monthly reports that are submitted to the school board on the status of the work of the construction contractor and the architect. And our last policy this evening is on contractors' affidavits and guarantees, which we are deleting to reduce redundancy, since the requirements in that policy are currently included in the school division's procurement policy and in the state code. So in terms of our next steps, the new and revised policies will come before the school board for action at your March 23rd meeting, and once approved, the new and revised policies and procedures will be posted on our school division website and disseminated to schools and public libraries. So this concludes my report, but joining me this evening to respond to questions are Dr. Michelle Mitchell and Mr. Richard Derrmeyer, who I would like to thank for their work on the seclusion and restraint policy and procedure, along with Mr. Jaron Ransum. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Russell again for her leadership on the facilities, planning, and development policies chapter. So thank you. At this time, we'll be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Board members, questions about policy Chapter F? All right, well, thank you for that very thorough report, and we appreciated all the revisions that we can look forward to in March. Next item, then we're going to move on to our next item on our agenda, which is 5.04. We have the attendance report, 5.05, 5.04 is the attendance report, I'm sorry. 5.05 is a membership report. 5.06, construction report. Board members, you have received copies of these reports in your packets. Are there any questions? All right. Hearing none, then we will move on to item 5.07, comments by Dr. Parker.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before beginning my prepared remarks, I'd like to just share some good news with you, a point of good news, in particular for the Southeast community. I was approached by the leadership of Achievable Dream recently and Riverside Health Systems to partner with them and members of the Southeast community in creating two vaccination clinic locations in the Southeast community to be held on Saturdays, alternating Saturdays, at Achievable Dream Academy and Achievable Dream Middle and High School. So the discussions are going, working out very well for a weekly clinic to be set up. The vaccine supply will be provided by Riverside Health Systems, and the targeted group during this 1B rollout will be residents ages 65 and older as we move forward, and we're working out the details of the registration process. And I just saw a schematic of the clinic that they will set up in the gymnasium areas of those two buildings that will only operate on Saturdays for the time period where a vaccine is available. And we do not have to use our staff for the shot. The Riverside is, will provide the manpower for administering the vaccines, and they're ready to roll. We are expecting to hear the date of the kickoff by Thursday, and I will look forward to hearing more about their registration process because we're trying to figure out how are we going to get our elderly residents in the community to register for their vaccinations so that they have an appointment, because these will be appointment-only. So just a little good news is something that's coming, pulling together, and hopefully will tie some of, some more of our community organizations together to support us in getting our residents out to take, to have access to the vaccine in the near future. So in terms of my remarks here, I just wanted to acknowledge again the board for your dedication to public education and service to students, and I must say that a productive and collegial school board should never be taken for granted, and we know that. So we work very hard at making sure that we are collegial and work well together, and thank you for that. Thank you for your commitment and support to students, families, and staff, and the staff of Newport News and your leadership has made a difference. And I'd also like to thank Mrs. Buffalo for her, for your commitment to not only the board, but the school division as a whole. You're the glue that hold, hold all of the folks on this podium together, so thank you so much for your efforts. So just a few quick announcements. February is also Career and Technical Education Month, so I will take a moment to thank all of our CTE teachers and educators. Our CTE educators lead more than 80 courses that prepare our students to earn industry certifications and earn marketable job skills. So thank you for ensuring that our students are college, career, and citizen-ready. We'd also have some individual congratulations. I'd like to start by congratulating Tiffany Smith of Heritage High School and Michael Bellamy, formerly of Warwick High School, and now the Administrative Assistant at Crittenton Middle School, for being named Wise Gold Star Teachers. To earn the Gold Star Award, a teacher must achieve a 93% pass rate on the Wise Financial Literacy Certification Test in at least one of their classes. So congratulations to these teachers. They are still hitting the mark with our Wise Financial Literacy Assessments, and thank you for your service. We'd like to also say congratulations to Robbie Pritchett, a junior at Woodside High School's Center for the Arts and Communications Magnet Program. Robbie was selected to produce a story for WTKR News Channel 3 for National News Literacy Week, the week of January 25th. His segment focused on expectations for the first 100 days of the Biden administration and the needs for adults to listen to youth voices. Powerful. To check out Robbie's story, visit our website at nnschools.org. And we have a staff member we'd like to congratulate, Mr. Richard Wright, our Chief of Staff, will help lead the statewide efforts to reopen Virginia's public schools. The State Superintendent of Public Education, of Public Instruction, Dr. James Lane tapped Mr. Wright to serve as a leader for the newly-formed Virginia Learns Work Group, which is tasked to develop recommendations and identify resources and best practices for a successful return to in-person instruction. Mr. Wright's work in identifying and deploying equitable practices in public schools will support the Virginia Learns Work Group with its reopening guidance. Congratulations to Mr. Wright for being recognized for that leadership opportunity. And that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those encouraging words. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Some really great positive comments. We'll now move on to item number six, where there's another opportunity to hear from the public. We have any cards? Madam Clerk, do we have any cards? All right. There being no cards, then we will move on to item seven, and Mr. Moody, I believe tonight, you'll get a chance to have the last word and close us out.
Yes, sir. All right. I don't want to be long at all, but I did want to highlight a couple more things that we're doing district-wide. Operation Kindness Week. So Operation Kindness Week this month, or this week, excuse me, we want you to do something that'll make someone smile. So on Monday, you're supposed to support, today is Motivate. Wednesday will be Include. Thursday will be Love, and Friday will be Educate for E. All right? We want to thank the Vibes Student Talk Show. They've been posting Black History facts every single day at 11 o'clock in the morning, so we want to thank them for educating us on this Black History Month. And I wanted to say, as always, the great things are going to be happening, and you know, some things I can't talk about yet, but I'm excited about, so you stay connected with me, @StudentRepNMPS on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And like I said, this today was Motivate, Infra-Motivate, so I wanted, I sent this text to everyone I could, and I want to say it here in closing, and that's that if you can dream it, you can do it. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Madam Vice Chair, do we have need for a closed meeting? a closed meeting this evening?
Um, we did not have a closed meeting.
Wonderful. Then with that, we will stand adjourned, and thank you all for coming tonight.
Nobody wants to follow George.